Welcome to the 16th meeting of the Milton Planning Board for fiscal year 2021. My name is April Anderson. I am Chair of the Board. Kathleen?
Kathleen O'Donnell, member.
Denny Swenson, sorry.
Denny Swenson, Secretary Member.
Cheryl.
Cheryl Taggias, member.
And our staff, Allison.
Assistant Town Planner, Allison Quinn.
And Julia, I believe I saw on.
Yep, Julia Getman, Planning Clerk.
Great. And our Planning Director is unable to join us as he is staffing one of the Zoning Board of Appeals 40B hearings this evening. We may not see him for several meetings as he is booked up quite a bit with the 40B demand. The first item on our, well, actually, I need to identify that we are meeting via the Zoom meeting format in accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency. This meeting of the Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid any group congregation or exposure. But the meeting is available publicly. It is aired live by Milton Access Television, also recorded by Milton Access Television for viewing on demand. And anybody who wishes to participate in the meeting is able to do so via the Zoom call-in information, either dial in via zoom.com or call in with the number that is listed on the agenda and is on the screen now. The first item of business, well, first, we have some administrative items, but the first item is our next meeting dates, which are normally scheduled for April 8th and April 22nd. April 8th, I think, still works for everybody. April 22nd, I am traveling and won't be available. So I thought I'd leave it up to all of you to decide whether we should attempt to reschedule or just keep it as is and you all can participate without me. What do you think?
April, what do you envision to be on the agenda the next two meetings?
So there's not much unless there are some filings. I think Tim sent an email that there was the 440 Granite Avenue project had filed site plan approval, which is under technical review with the planning office. So that could potentially come up. And I think that's it. Then our discussion about 40B testimony and housing production strategies. The one thing I will note, though, is if anybody is planning, and I know there's another project that Tim is expecting too, but nothing has been filed. But my last meeting, the election is coming on April 27th. So I'm hopeful that anybody requiring four votes of the board does not make any filing still after that, so that the new member has an opportunity to participate in those deliberations. But it doesn't seem like it's a very heavy agenda, although I did ask Tim if he thought we needed the second meeting in April because we have town meeting in May. Extra meeting that week of the Planning Board, at least one, maybe two, and he said he thought we should keep it on just in case.
And do you know when we expect to receive the report, East Milton? From Vera Planning? I thought we might have had that by now.
Yes, I agree with you. I thought we would have had it too, as did Tim, and I spoke with Judy Barrett earlier in the week, and she promised that we would have it this week. So that could potentially be an agenda, although I haven't seen it yet. She said she'll get it out to us this week, and that could potentially be an agenda item for April 8th. If we have it, I would like to discuss it April 8th if possible.
So I'm flexible on the 21st if.
So I should clarify, Denny, I'm actually out of town the whole week. It's school vacation week.
Oh, okay, okay.
The whole week. So the options are we can reschedule for the week of April 12th. The board can decide to reschedule for the week of the 26th with the new member, assuming it's after Tuesday. Or you can meet the week of the 19th, perhaps on the 22nd without me. And I wouldn't have any hard feelings if he chose to do that.
Okay, so I do have a flexibility on the week of the 12th. And I'm also flexible to have the meeting without April, so I guess I will defer to other people's schedules.
Tim sent us an email today, right, that's about one that town will be presenting town comments for the 40Bs, and I'm looking for the dates right now.
April 1st, April 6th, April 21st.
Okay, so the 21st would be before that meeting on the 22nd. Okay.
Could you say those again? April 1st, April?
April, no, actually, let me see. April 1st is the Ice House, April 648 Canton. And April 21st is 582 Blue Hill Ave. And just for anyone who's watching, these are dates that have been assigned by the Zoning Board of Appeals for town departments to testify in those ZBA hearings.
Oh, okay, so we're going to be going to those anyway. All right. I remember this. Thank you. And I did see his note earlier, so yeah, okay.
I mean, we have to discuss the content of those, the testimony. But the first and the sixth is creeping up on us, so we need to talk about that tonight. The 582 Blue Hill Ave, there are more details to come.
Yeah, they have, their peer review has, I mean, it's a new peer review because of the new design.
And I saw they had some shadow information on the stuff that I saw today.
You know, as far as if we wanted, I think it's good to hold that meeting, but if we wanted to have, if there was something that required attention, we could schedule, I'm available the week before. So if we wanted to have a hold date the week before, which would then, I think, probably otherwise, the sixth would be, or the eighth would be April's last meeting, right?
Yes.
So why don't we shoot for, I mean, if nothing comes up, there's no reason to have a meeting just to have a meeting or have a short agenda. But should we have a hold on the week before just in case?
To the 15th?
Yeah, I suppose we could do that so we could prepare for our meeting on the 21st. As, you know, a hold if we can't get, if we're not able to.
Well, maybe it would be good to do it. Anyway, I think the 582 Blue Hill Ave has some pretty significant changes. And so I think, you know, and that they just came in last night and today in terms of documents. I tuned in and, you know, there's a lot of, you know, I think there's going to be a fair amount of review that needs to be done between now and then. And I think the Chair mentioned that he'd like to get the Planning Board's comments as well. So I would say I'm fine with moving it up a week and then, you know, we can continue with this composition, you know, to get on to that for the, you know, for that meeting on the 21st. And then after that, we'll have our new member, I guess, right?
Does that work for you, Kathleen, the 15th?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so the timing actually works out nicely because Tim's email said that we were expecting the peer review presentation on 582 on the 14th.
Oh, great, okay.
Have the benefit of watching that peer review and the next night. Okay, perfect. So Allison, did you catch all that?
I certainly did.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your flexibility. So we have, the next item is approval of the minutes, which is, or the minutes, I believe, just the minutes from March 11.
And actually, we did have February 25th. I had to check the tape because Cheryl brought up a good question. So March 11th, I don't have any amendments, and I think we can move to approve those. I just wanted to have a quick catch-up on the February 25th. Cheryl raised the question, did he really say there's a 111 spots available for public parking? And the answer is, I checked the tape and that's exactly what he said. So the question is whether or not that's accurate is a different question. But if we were to say, and the applicant stated that there will be 111 spots available for public parking, I think that could clarify the meeting minutes. And then the other question was, I'm sorry, this was during the 88 War discussion. The other thing that you asked was, what was in the minutes was, he said the former landlord had never used a lease provided by the MBTA. And you asked a good question, which is, it didn't seem like there was a lease period. But the way that Julia had it in the meeting minutes is that he said the former landlord had never used a lease. So, I mean, it's accurate to what he said. He's not claiming that one existed or one didn't exist. He's just saying it was never used if it did exist.
And if I, if I may, I think that was part of the town's presentation also. I believe Allison due diligence on that and confirmed that was accurate, that there was no lease agreement ever executed with the MBTA.
That's correct. I could not find any recorded lease agreement.
So should that be reflected in the minutes as opposed to having? So it says, he said, the applicant said, the former landlord never used a lease provided by the MBTA for parking at Milton Station.
They never did because they never got one, so.
Can I just say, can I say something?
Yes.
Those minutes were, I thought, approved and they were signed and posted on the website. I took all that stuff out about the lease and the parking. I just.
Oh, so I'm looking at the wrong one then. Okay. All right. I'm sorry. I thought that that's the one that, okay, we did discuss it, but I didn't know that we had approved those minutes, but that's fine because that's fine. Okay.
Denny, it's a little confusing because I think we sent out the revised ones.
Oh, okay.
So that you could see that they were revised and posted.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, then that's perfect. Okay, as long as that's all updated. All right, so I'd like to move to approve the March 11th, 2021, meeting minutes without amendments.
Second.
Okay, and we have your roll call vote, Cheryl Taggias?
Yes.
Denny Swenson?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
And April Anderson abstained because I was not at the meeting. Okay, next on the agenda is our staff update. Allison, do you have an update for us?
I do. Tim sent along an update that he would like for me to share with you. The Bike and Pedestrian Master Plan Contract with MAPC was approved by the Select Board and signed by the Town Administrator today. The next step will be a kickoff meeting with MAPC. He's also working with Beta Group on data gathering for the Local Rapid Recovery Planning Program Grant. This will result in an action plan for post-COVID recovery for the East Milton Business District. We're working on finalizing nomination process for members of the Open Space Planning Committee. At a future meeting, the Planning Board may be asked to nominate a representative. And he has completed the technical review of 440 Granite Avenue, the site plan approval application. There are a few minor issues and questions came up, but a formal application should be coming soon. As far as updates for me, we have been in the process of applying for the Community One Stop that April has been lending a hand on. We got some great feedback from Econ about next steps and where we should really be focusing our effort. That's the one good thing about this is you get some really kind of fine-tuned feedback that's specific to your need. So we're kind of focusing down Milton Village. We're looking at some potential opportunities for enhancing and improving that Worf area. We have an onsite walk with DCR scheduled for next week with their engineers. Our own new engineer, Marina, is joining us, as is Chase from the Department of Public Works. The Wentworth Projects are moving along. The students have kind of finalized, you know, what they want to do. Now they're just going to choose where they want to do it. So that's kind of all I have for you.
Great. Julia, did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I don't. Thanks for asking.
Thank you. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is Citizen Speak. We have a hand raised. If anybody in the audience would like to speak during Citizen Speak, please raise your hand. And for right now, I see Ned Corcoran, who I don't think I'm a host, so I can't unmute anybody.
Okay, let me see if I can.
Ned Corcoran, if you would like to address the board, please do. I thought he was unmuted. He is. Yeah, I just unmuted him. I don't know if he's having technical difficulties. Okay, if anybody else would like to address the board on Citizen Speak or anything that's not on our agenda tonight, please feel free to raise your hand. And our next presentation is by Ned Corcoran anyway, so we can just give him a minute.
I think we need to make him co-host so that he can share his screen.
Okay, I can do that. I can, if it's for convenience and to see if he'd be able to speak, I can make him a panelist.
Sure, sure. Thank you. Okay, I don't see anyone else for Citizen Speak, and I don't actually see Ned with us now.
Promoted him and he didn't show up. Wait a minute, he's duplicate account.
Okay, for the audience, sorry about the technical difficulties. This is our new COVID reality.
Here he comes.
Okay, he is in and co-hosted.
Okay. Ned, do you have something for Citizen Speak?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, so.
Something you would like to share for Citizen Speak?
Yes, and I'm in by, so I'm in by phone because I'm having issues with my computer. And I apologize for that. I've got, I do have one issue on Citizen Speak. And then I've got three other people I would ask to be elevated to panelists relative to the presentation this evening.
Okay. Why don't you use Citizen Speak and then we'll do, we'll take care of the presentation.
Okay, thank you. And I just, very briefly, I just wanted to express publicly my condolences for the loss of the Milton Club.
Oh, yeah.
Which is a real tragic loss for this town. And, you know, I put three years of professional heart and soul into that project. Peter Kelly put his heart and soul into making that a really great place. It is a place that welcomed all sorts of Milton activities, from cotillion to parties to balls to all sorts of things. And I really think it's a tragic loss, and I just wanted to pay public respects to the loss of that great asset for the town.
Great. Does anyone else have anything to say on this?
Yeah, it's just a total loss. I agree with him. It's just such a shame.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Ned. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak for Citizen Speak? If you do, please raise your hand. Let me see, no one. Okay, so Ned, who would you like to be elevated to panelist for your presentation?
I would like Sarah McLaren, who's the Executive Director of the, of Winter Valley. Jim DeVellis, who's our project engineer, and I would actually like him to share a screen because he's got the presentation. And John Downey, who's the project architect.
Okay, so this is on our next agenda item, which is an informational presentation on the proposed Winter Valley expansion.
So thank you. So I am, this, Jim, I am joined by Sarah McLaren, who is the Executive Director, Jim DeVellis, who's the project engineer, and John Downey, who is the project architect. Winter Valley, as you know, is a senior and handicapped facility, approved by a special zoning of the town back in the 1970s and 80s. It is a 24-acre campus with five buildings and 160 units of senior indoor handicapped housing. Recently, so 30 years ago, when the property was being developed, as a part of their overall plan, two separate portions of the property to the rear were put in conservation trust. The furthest portion back, approximately three acres, was put into permanent conservation easement. And a second portion closer to Canton Avenue was put into a 30-year temporary easement. That temporary easement expired in 2020. And Winter Valley's been working with Tim and others in the town to move forward with an expansion with a sixth building to host 36 units of affordable senior housing. We need zoning relief. We need approval from this board relative to site plan approval. And we're at a point where we have survey preliminary site plans, some architectural renderings that we wanted to begin to present to you. We're going before the Conservation Commission on April 13th to have some preliminary informational presentation to gain your sets of preliminary comments so that as we file, we're filing responding to appropriate issues and concerns. And with that, I'd hand it over to Jim DeVellis and John Downey to walk us through the presentation.
April, excuse me, a quick question just on the schedule for Ned. When are you going before the ZBA?
We don't know yet. We need either zoning, we need zoning relief. It will either be in the form of a variance. And we won't file until we're ready to file, till the plans are ready. And, or we will need an amendment to the zoning, and we're considering that as an alternative to a variance. And those decisions will be made in the next week or so, and we hope to be filing the applications by mid-April. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Ned, and thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. As Ned said, my name is Jim DeVellis. I'm a professional civil engineer. And my client is Winter Valley, and we're providing civil engineering and landscape architecture services to them. So we're a little bit past the concept stage. So what we're doing is kind of bringing it in formally in front of the Planning Board, just to kind of get your feedback tonight. Then we go back and we do full design drawings, as Ned had said, in front of the zoning board, in front of the Conservation Commission. So I can see my screen. I'm sharing it. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. So there's a couple of slides here. I'll just bring you through. And then I can't see John Downey. Is he let in yet?
I'm here.
Okay, great. So I'll go over the site. I'll walk you through the site. And then at the tail end of this, there's some building elevations and floor plans that John can talk about. So this first slide here is just a simple aerial. Nothing proposed on it. And if you can see my cursor here, this is Canton Ave, so it's 600 Canton Ave. And the site access to Winter Valley comes down through here, and there's a series of buildings that come up through the site. A little bit further, using the soap. There we go. The last building here and then turns around here. I have a survey in a second. It'll show the limits of the property line. So Canton Ave is here. If you look to the right, this is Highland Street. Over here, the short road is Holmes Lane. And then coming up from this direction is Old Farm Road. So it's very wooded and it's sitting right in the middle here. You look at it from a boring, more boring picture, but it's a survey. Again, Canton Ave, this blue line is the property line that comes around a little bit. There we go. So that's the limit. There's 24 acres in total. It comes around here, frontage, frontage here, and then it comes back here. So this area here is what we're looking at doing an expansion now. So there's 160 units in total through here. And we're proposing one additional building, very similar to this, that has 32 units in here. So blow up this, so this same area, if it's blown up, a different scale. This is it here. So that's the last building. That's the drive and the parking, and then you go back this way. So we'd be utilizing the existing parking, coming through here, a turnaround, some handicap spots, and then back here, and then parking, and then back. And this is the proposed 32-unit building, and John will talk about the architecture. So we spent a considerable amount of time figuring out the best location of the building, you know, concept-wise, wanting to respect the neighborhood, even though this is through woods, the neighbors over here. This is pretty much wooded. In the back here, there's about four and a half acres in this piece that's got a permanent conservation restriction on it. So we're limited to this line right here is the permanent restriction. So we're limited to this area. So we situated the building in this way, so, you know, we looked at buildings here, and then you're basically looking out right over the property line. And we looked at putting the building here, and that brings all the parking and kind of the noise, the day-to-day stuff, over towards the residential side. So we ended up angling the building. The very limited use here, going just a couple of handicap spaces and drop-off pickup, the front door, but the majority of the activity is going to be behind the building or on the side of the building. This, this kind of jagged line is bordering vegetated wetlands that have been flagged. And this is the 100-foot buffer. So we met this week with your Conservation Agent Ivis, sorry, Steve Ivis. And we walked the site, and there's a potential of moving the building in this direction. We looked at this wetland, so we may kind of split the difference and bring it in this area, which would give more of a setback to the property line. So it's kind of in flux. We're looking at the wetlands and the topography and what's exactly here and how we can move it. But for right now, this is the concept that we're looking at. There's 15 spaces, 15 spaces, and then five here, so 35 spaces total. Where does it sit on the aerial? So the same aerial that you saw at the beginning with the building in the drive and the parking. And we put this here so you can kind of see in context to the surrounding areas. This is the closest to butter here. This building corner to the property line is 55 feet, I think. So from the property line to these houses is probably another 100 feet, so 150 feet or so from building to building. So the building itself, if it's okay, why don't I, I'll jump right into the architecture and then we can circle back with questions. Does that make sense to the board?
Yes.
All right, so John, I'll continue with the screen if you want to just kind of tell me what to do here. I'll move forward and back.
Okay, that's fine. Right now, we're just looking at basically block diagrams of laying out the units and the areas of common space, the lobby, the elevators, laundry, mail, community rooms, screen porch, things like that. And it's going to be mostly one-bedroom units. There will be eight two-bedroom, I'm sorry, it's 12 two-bedroom units. And then two one-bedroom plus dens. But the bulk of it, and it's a 36-unit building on three floors. So continue on, Jim. This is the upper level plan. It's all units on the second and third floor. The one-bedroom plus den is behind the elevators. And the rest of it is one-bedrooms and two-bedrooms. Continue. These are preliminary elevations. The bottom elevation is the front, the front side of the building. The top elevation is the rear side that shows the screen porch. And then the end elevations are very similar from one end to the other. Not sure what else. Uh, not sure what else we, we uh, like to talk about, I could talk about materials, uh, we're, you know, this is all very preliminary, right now, we're looking at. Fiber cement uh clabbards for the bulk of the building. Uh, we'd like to use on the, the little tower elements, um, a fiber cement uh. Uh, shiplap, uh, which is a little bit smoother and a larger uh, uh, face to them. And uh, then we're looking at possibly doing a, a brick or a masonry uh base to the building. And that's really about it, is, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Okay, um, Jim, did you have anything more to add, or are you done too?
Uh, no, I, I can go back to the, the aerial or the site plans, or we can focus on the building and just answer questions.
Okay, why don't we open it up to the board, we would like to start.
Oh, I'll go ahead, Catherine, Kathleen, go ahead.
Yeah, so, so the existing buildings at Winter Valley, what's, what's the um, facade of those?
As far as materials go?
Yeah.
The, the, most of the buildings are vinyl clad, uh, most of the, the two-story buildings that are at the front of the site. The uh, last building on the site, uh, which is building five, is uh, is a, a two-and-a-half story building that is. Um, mostly shingle, uh, cedar shingles.
Mm-hmm. Okay, and then, did you say that all of these units would be affordable, all of them?
Yes. The, the plan is that all of these, all of the units will be affordable.
Great, that's it.
Okay, um, I'll go ahead. Uh, on the um, the site plan, it looks like this part of the site's all wooded, is that, is that right?
Yes.
At whether there's any significant trees, we know that nearby, there are some significant large. Beech trees, for example, so I'm wondering if you've taken a look and seen, I, I know you're kind of restricted, but it sounds like you might have an opportunity to. Um, be a little bit more flexible with where you position the building. Um, and I do appreciate that the parking lot is situated. Um, on the other side of the building and, um, and not adjacent to the single-family residential that's there. Um, so can you just comment about the trees?
Yep, Cheryl, we were out uh, yesterday morning on a site walk with Steve Ivis. Um, and so we, we were paying attention to, there are, you know, it's very wooded. Uh, it is an area that has been historically wooded, it's part of the, it's the area that was subject to a thirty-year. Um, pr- re- re- conservation restriction, so no touch, um, so there, it is wooded. And um, we do need to pay attention to the extent that we can, obviously, to saving, to citing the building to save trees. We've got sort of three competing issues relative to the location of the building. One is rel- relationship to the Yandle Dwelling. Um, we, uh, the second is the relationship to the, uh, to the wetland that you see. On the right-hand side of the screen, and then the third is, is trees. And, and how do we cite the building to minimize impacts to all three? Um, and so some of that is still, obviously, that's still ongoing, but we are paying attention to those issues.
Okay, and then um, on the building, hello, John, I don't know if you remember us having worked together years ago.
Yes, I, I remember.
Nice to see you again.
Nice to see you as well.
John, I'm curious if you've taken um, a look at her, if you would consider. Um, incorporating the third floor more into the roof line, so you could drop this, the height of the building down some. Um, you know, I know you would have to do dormers to do that, um, but is that something that you folks think is a possibility?
I've looked at that, what it does is, uh, in order to get the thirty-six units, is it, it stretches the building's width. So that, uh, makes the building longer, uh. Again, you know, in order to keep the thirty-six units, if, if we're, if we're using that as, as the goal. The um, the problem, th- there's, there's a couple of issues with doing the, the dormers, is that. Uh, also that the units don't stack on the third floor. So s- some units may be able to stack, but probably very few. Um, the other part of that is that the, um. The zoning, the way the zoning is written, it's very difficult to make it comply as a, as a, uh. Or if you, if you're, if the goal was to make it a two-and-a-half story building, it's almost impossible to do at, at this size.
Uh, I was thinking, not necessarily making it two and a half, but just being able to drop the height down some. So, you know, if you have large shed dormers, some other kinds of dormers, I also wonder if. These elevations depict the flat site, is the site really flat, so will we have some?
It's pretty flat.
Okay. And have you?
Pretty flat.
Okay, um, we've been looking at uh, two applications for forty B projects nearby this. And as part of that, we've taken a three-dimensional analysis and have actually constructed and. Sketch up the Winter Valley complex as a part of that analysis. So if you have this in a three-dimensional form, such as SketchUp or Revit. That you could share, then we could plug it into our model and see what the scale looks like in that.
Okay, okay, I, I, I haven't done that as yet, but that's, that's kind of next on the agenda, is to start looking at it in, in three dimensions.
And it really just needs to be a simple massing model, it doesn't need to have any other detail on it.
John, I, John, I can send you that, um, the work that Cheryl did for the. Planning board on the forty B stuff tomorrow, I'll get that out.
Okay, okay.
And it may be, and it may be that you just looked a little bit more carefully at the massing of, of a portion of the building that's closest to. Um, the single-family butter, I would like to say, though, that, um, I live nearby here. Canton Avenue, and I go by Winter Valley frequently, and occasionally I walk through Winter Valley to get over to Highland Street. And I'd like to say it's a nice complex, it's well-kept, it's quiet, I very seldomly see cars coming and going. And adding thirty-six affordable elderly units here, or age or sixteen units here, I think would be an asset to the town. So I think, um, as long as, you know, there's consultation with the director of butter of the Yandals. Um, and that their concerns are taken into consideration, such as preserving landscaping, uh. Making sure that the scale is not overwhelming or impacting them, um, I think that, um. That this would be an asset and a good addition for us in the town.
We are having direct conversations with the Yandals, um, just so you're aware. Um, their first and fundamental concern was the location of the parking, and the first plan we had, had parking. Closer to their property line, they were very concerned about the impact from noise, et cetera, and so part of the, as Jim described, was. Turning the building on an angle, moving the parking to the other side of the building, really has gone a long way to mitigate, um, that primary concern.
Okay, that's all for me, thank you.
Thanks, um, Denny is embraced?
Oh, yes, um, so, um, are these one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom units?
They're uh, mostly two, uh, one-bedrooms, there are twelve, uh, two-bedrooms. And three one-bedroom, or sorry, two one-bedroom plus dens.
Okay. Okay, so you have two one-bedroom, twelve two-bedrooms. How do you eat thirty-five?
Let me, uh, let's see, sixteen. There's twenty-two one-beds.
Okay, twenty-two, okay, that's how you get there, okay, all right.
Twelve, uh, two-bed. It's thirty-four, and then the, the two one-bedroom plus den.
Okay, okay, so that gives you to thirty-six units?
Yes.
Okay, um, and, um. Y- you had mentioned it's, it's flat on the site, but is that site? Is the topography higher than the house, the a butter's house, how tall is the a butter's house? I mean, I know we're going to be looking at scale later, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, I, I, we, we have an existing condition survey that just did the property.
Well, that's fine.
But I, but I can look at, um, the GIS to see what the contours do, but this is an unusual site because. This, um, this wetland is actually higher than here. So the, the topography flows down this way, and there's a wetland here, so it's, it's the opposite of what you think. So this is a lot lower than here, and I think that, I think that the topography goes like in this direction, so it's probably similar to the elevation here. But I, I can get that from state map.
Okay, all right, and, um, what, what number old farm is the a butter?
Not old farm.
Actually not old farm, uh, Danny, it's Merzwood Lane.
Oh, oh, Merzwood Lane, okay.
And then, yes, maybe I missed, I thought it was old farm.
No, it's, it's, it's actually got a Canton Avenue address, I forget specifically which number, I think it's six fifty, it's not sixty-two, I think it's six. I know the one in the back is six fifty, that's, um, Burger, uh, Vernon Felton, his wife, that's. Uh, and then the Yandals are the ones who are directly opposite, and then, um, next is Beth Janiga. And, um, we, I reviewed those, the plans with all three of them, um. And obviously, we'll keep them posted on what's happening.
All right, and, um, uh, would you be taking down a lot of trees around where the cars will turn around? I'm just, it seems like there's, they, they live on nice wooded lots too, uh, we just wouldn't want any of the lights. From the vehicles to go into their, you know, property.
Yeah.
You know, into there.
Yeah, we looked at that, um, so this, zoom in a little bit here. This is actually the property line here.
Okay.
Now, let me go back to the survey, that might help a little bit, here we go. Okay, so there's two lines that show up here, one is, um. Something to do with registered, non-registered, and there's a sewer easement, but, um. If, if you go through the site now, you'll notice that the parking, the building, uh, are very close to trees, they, they, they don't, they didn't clear cut. Um, I, I, I worked on, uh, Full, uh, Fuller Village years ago on Brush Hill, and there was a. The same mentality there as it is here, is to keep the, the, uh, the vegetation as much as you can. So all, as you come up to the site, you'll see, see the tree line here, it's pretty close to it, so. We're trying to, we'll try to do the same thing here, and where it's pretty flat. There's not a lot of hills that we have to catch the grade on, so the tree line should go really close to here, and. Um, you know, with the understanding that as the cars come out in the busy evening, you'll have headlights, no problem putting a fence along here. Um, to get the low light from headlights and, and so between here and a hundred and fifty feet over, it's fully wooded also.
That's great, um, and so it's for seniors, is it fifty-five plus?
Sixty-three plus.
Sixty-three.
It would be sixty-two or older.
Sixty-two.
Oh, sixty-two.
There's only sixty-two or older, or, um, handicap, right, Cheryl?
Um, physically disabled, yes.
Okay, all right, and, and so you would have, uh, walkability from this parking area. Onto the Winter Valley. Um, um, roadway to Canton Avenue.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, 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 it's that, none of that will change.
Okay, and so that would be ADA compliant or whatever, so that, so that they can actually.
Yeah.
Danny, they actually have sidewalks, um, in their campus down to Canton Avenue?
Yeah, so I wanted this to connect to that, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, everything that we do will, will, under, under five percent and then two percent cross-tol, so it's all going to be ADA compliant.
Okay, and then, um, any of the lighting, we want it to be the dark sky compliant, turning down, because you're in a beautiful. Um, okay, well, I, I think, um, you know, I, I am interested to hear from the neighbors if they've thought of anything else, um, but. I agree with Cheryl, I think this is a, yeah, in concept, I think this is a, a, a good idea. Um. And, uh, yeah, I'm just most, I just want to, you're right, you're right next to wetlands, and I just want to respect as much of the woodlands as we can. And just re- respect the neighbors in, in whatever thoughtful ways you can think of.
Yeah, that, that's our goal too, so.
Yeah, and, and, you know, the, the, it is kind of dense and heavy, and you're right next to wetlands, so the, the grading and all of that. So I'm glad to hear it's pretty flat, um, and, and, um. You know, I, I don't know if you're going to run into stormwater issues and so forth, but. You, you might have to scale it down in order to, to do those. You know, ponds and everything, and that would be a shame, so.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, um, we'll, we'll meet, we need to meet all the best management practices with stormwater, so. What I like to do is collect it and do grass channels, and rather than a large detention basin with a fence around it. Uh, so we've been pretty successful, you know, doing something like that, and integrating it into what's already there.
Thank you.
Um, thanks, Danny, so I guess everybody else has spoken, um, so I'll go last, so, uh, Ned, you mentioned it's just a hundred percent affordable. At what percent of AMI?
Sarah, do you know that?
Yes, the winter property right now is eighty percent, um, up to eighty percent AMI. Um, except building five, they're at fifty percent AMI, and I would assume, um, we'd keep this probably at fifty.
Okay, um, so.
The project will be financed with a HUD loan, uh, so it'll be HUD, yeah, obviously, the HUD requirements will be front and center.
Um, I guess my cons are similar to Cheryl's, I think this is a great, um. Property, and I guess that's a tribute to you, Sarah, you do a very nice job, um, I've been up there several times, I drop off. Plastic shopping bags for people that may ask or whatever. And I've been up very, a number of times, and it's always beautifully kept, and people seem very happy that live there, and I think you do a really nice job. Never once heard a complaint about this property ever on my time on the board, or just in regular life, or even scanning through Facebook. And I think that's a testament to the job that you do, um, I think this project specifically meets the needs. That of our seniors and, um, physically disabled residents, as called out in our housing production plan, so I'm very happy to see it. And I think it, it sounds great, um, and it looks like it's been thoughtfully. Put together, and I'm looking forward to seeing you move forward.
Very nice to hear, thank you.
You're welcome, um, so I should, I should also say I will not be on the board when you do. There are a couple of meetings left, but maybe I'll come and testify as a citizen, um, but I think this is a very thoughtfully constructive project, so thank you. Um, we don't technically need to do any sort of public comment, but we have six attendees from the public tonight. And so I thought I, maybe if the board is okay, have any thoughts about this and wants to share, if we just take a couple of minutes?
Yeah.
Option open, um, so if anybody who's attending tonight has any comments on this, please raise your hand. And I don't see any hands raised, um, so I guess that concludes the presentation, thank you very much, and we'll look forward to your filing. Um, and I assume you'll be working with Allison and Tim as you move forward.
That's right, and we look forward to doing that, thank you very much, April, we appreciate your time.
Thanks.
Thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, so the next, um, item on our agenda is under old business, discussion of forty B. Testimony to the Board of Appeals, um, so we have the first, just to reiterate what we were discussing at the beginning of the meeting. Tim let us know that the ICE House hearing, um, of the zoning board of appeals. That is scheduled for public department, town department testimony is April first, so I must, I'm going to suggest that we start with that one. I think, um, Cheryl, are you the one who has the letter up that we had already sent into the planning?
Oh, I don't have, um, just give me a minute, I can get it, okay, sorry.
No, no, that's okay.
I should have done that while we were. Doing our final comments.
I was strategizing with Allison via text, I'm sorry to loop you in. Listen, how to share the information, so I think the best thing for us to do is take a look at the letter that we've already submitted and kind of start off from there. To see what was included and what, um, included.
Getting to it, give me one second.
I suspect the board is in agreement that we do want to say something, is that?
Yes, definitely.
Is this the final hearing for the ICE House?
I, I think that we, we're almost at the end, yeah, April first might be the last. Um, uh, the last.
We sent those in, in, um, January, right, is that when we sent that in?
I think so, yeah. I think so, yeah.
Sorry, just give me another minute.
Oh, that's okay, thank you, I'm sorry we didn't tee this up in advance.
Yeah, I I didn't realize they weren't in the folders that that Tim had forwarded, my apologies, and then when I try to. Access my my worktop from remotely, it just keeps kicking me out.
I believe I have it, so, wait, no, that's the. I s- I got it now, all right, here we go. You want me to do a screen share here?
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay, can you see it?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Cheryl.
No problem, I I just want to point out um. Uh that I, I think I mentioned at the last time we talked about forty-B uh projects, is that. The p- architectural peer review for this project suggested flipping the. Footprint of the building, so sort of mirroring it, if you will, to put um. Right now it's kind of an L shape with one leg towards the single-family residential butter, which is. In the proximate to where the existing building is, and then the other leg following again about where the second existing.
Do you mean to say the Cheryl, the short leg of the L is. Butter, and the long leg runs um runs north-south?
Just maybe it's worthwhile bringing up the plans if I can get it here.
Because I think the last time I looked at it, that's the way it was set up.
Um, yeah, I've got, just let me get to the right page, and I'll do a different screen share, if that's okay.
While we're, while we're doing this, um Tim just texts me. From the ZBA hearing that the ZBA has decided they're not, they're not going to meet on April first.
Okay.
So our submission would be in, and they are gonna conclude tonight, I guess, so our submission would be um. They're gonna conclude the public testimony part of their hearing tonight. So we can still submit comments and writing for them to consider while they deliberate their deci- decision. Sorry, this is late breaking via text.
Can you see?
Yeah, so so the commercial units um are in that, in that lower. Lower part of the L facing. Yeah, and so are you saying that the peer reviewer wanted to flip it?
Yeah, so the peer review suggested putting this leg of the building basically over here.
Why?
And and um it's, well, the reasons are that it's close to the single family. My concern about doing that is this is an easement, and it serves a dual purpose as the drive. But you're not gonna be able to build on a building over that easement, so that means you're gonna be putting it here. And I think you're going to end up with the the parking needing to be pretty close to this property line.
Right.
So this is two stories here, and three stories here, rising up to something taller back there, but this single family. Here is next to the shorter part of the buildings, this part of the building might even be shorter than the existing building that you can see the footprint of right here. So I'm, I was curious um about that, I didn't know if the Board of Appeal was going to ask the applicant. To explore that option because it was in the peer review, it's also in the stormwater peer review, which I was reading um yesterday. Uh so if we go to, I mean, one of the things that we have here is that these uh these plans don't all match up. Um which, so this plan, you can see, this is the parking um layout, but if we go to the architectural plan. And it's oriented in a different orientation, so you have to kind of turn yourself, this is the existing single family here. And you can see that they've come in a little bit differently, that in order to go here. To the parking, you can go through the parking lot instead of the way it's done here. Which is that the access is separated from the parking lot, which. So one of the things that um we had uh put in our comment letter was to clarify which site plan was. Their intent to go with. Um but I I just wanted to point out the fact that that was in the peer review. And I did have concerns about that, and I wasn't sure if they were gonna ask them to to follow up on that. Um and then the other thing is here, this is um. It's called out here is a patuminous concrete driveway, but then it's elsewhere, it's called out as um. Let me see, well, it's not shown on the architectural at all, but it. There's no buffer here, and our comment letter spoke about. Um wanting a buffer, at least a fence, if not um landscaping, and then because. Now, they're showing a transformer here, so to have, the electric company needs access to a transformer. But this could be those glass or uh grass blocks.
Yeah.
That don't have to be um patuminous concrete, which is, you know, basically um asphalt. So rather than having that asphalt there with a very narrow um. Buffer, so that that was in the comment letter that we had. Um. So those are, you know, from from um. My recollection, I'll go back to the comment letter, but I just wanted to make sure everybody kind of, well, while we're here, if there was anything we wanted to see about what this looked like. Um, sorry, it's a little bit sideways, um I can, let's see. Flip this, I can do this well, let's see, ah, all right, I did it, um this is what I meant by the two-story. And. The rising up to three and then going to four. Um, this sidewalk, which comes out to um. Blue Hills Parkway is shown here, but it's not shown in the site plans, so that was another thing we commented on. Was that it was be important to have the act, the pedestrian access out to there. Um, and let me go, there's another. Rendering here, and see if I can get that flipped too. Why can't I get this one flipped? Now, I don't know where my little tool went for flipping it, but hopefully you can crank your neck and see a little bit there. The two-story from the parking lot, the three-story, and then the four-story in the back.
Yeah.
All right, so if we go back to a new screen share of the letter, oops, I don't think I actually. Have to do that, um I think it's just here. This was the, uh, sorry, this is the twenty-twenty, so this was the original one that went to the the select board. Sorry, I don't have, I, you want me to still look for the one that's um?
No, I think, I think we can, I think my suggestion would be that we draft a lo- Letter to the zoning board that repeats the, and we can pull it up from the this letter and from the other, from the other one. That repeats conditions that we think should be included in the decision. So, not under normal circumstances, I mean, you'd have it, you have a forty-B application, you get the decision, and it has like, okay, fine. We looked at all this stuff, and we suggest the following, we impose the following conditions, and so. You know, there's a whole bunch of plans that have to be submitted ahead of time, orders of the conditions, you know, la la la, you don't get your building permit unless. You've taken care of X, Y, and Z, um and so we would be wanting to put into our comment, uh you know, our letter. The kind of conditions that we think that they need to, um that the, we'd like to have the board address, so. Um, we might say that we um don't agree with the site, with the peer reviewer on on flipping the site. Flipping the building, and I kind of agree with Cheryl, I've walked around there, and I just don't see the. I don't, I don't see the logic behind what the peer reviewer has suggested. But we would say something like, we had, remember, we had talked about the fact that we wanted them to, you know, improve the connection around Pope's Pond. We wanted them to, you know, make sure they've addressed the conservation land, I think the idea of saying. The that using the, using those blocks instead of patin- Minus concrete, you know, given the location, it's such a sensitive site, is a good idea, so we would say that's. Those are the kinds of conditions that we would ask the ZBA to include in their decision. Um.
So the one thing that they were missing some information, which I still think they should ask for, which is the parking level floor plan. The building elevation at the rear, building sections and a landscape plan. And really, it would be nice to have a rendering from the Pope Pond, Pope's Pond side, like they have those other two renderings, so that was in the beginning, that was, I. Sorry, I did find this most recent letter, January twenty-first, so that was in the outset. Um talking about what was missing, so and then the inconsistencies in the site plans. Um, and there are um some inconsistencies in between the narrative and the plans also. But we did here, uh want to acknowledge the the design changes they had made from their original application that we thought were. Improvements, so that was there, and then this is what I was just talking about in terms of that a butter property. The sidewalk that I mentioned.
Yep.
Um, and then, as you said, Kathleen, the connection to Pope Pond and the and the Brook Path. And one thing here is this outdoor seating a- adjacent to the commercial space, because that was something that was very important, that space to the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Um, this public parking adjacent to that connection to the the path, the pine tree, Brook Path.
Yeah.
Some place based for children, which is not in the site plan. Bike storage at the exterior for the commercial space, and protection of trees that are outside of their. Needed area for the construction, right, so they do have some areas, particularly at the rear. Um, and then these last two were things that were reiterated from uh other comments previously, which has to do with. The crosswalk and sponsorship of a blue bikes bike share. So I think all of those things, I mean, I think are still relevant.
Yeah, why wouldn't we pull those out and put it in a letter to the ZBA?
Uh so that was my question, can you just roll up just a little bit, Cheryl, so we can see how this, these numbers started? Oh, the following incorporated in the project as condition, so maybe we just reiterate.
Yeah. Address, I don't think that was addressed to the ZBA, oh yeah, it was. Yeah, well, we could.
I think if, uh I mean, I had hoped that we would be able to kind of review these comments with them. So I do think we should reiterate that we think these are still valid and important comments that they should consider, and.
Okay.
But I think you're right, all of the things you just reviewed are all still completely relevant, so. Why not take the opportunity to remind them of our early suggestions? Admittedly, they've had a lot of information that they've taken, and this was a long time ago, and I think.
I think they'd also like to know that we don't have anything majorly different.
Right.
You you know, so so you know, those of us, you know, I've, I've seen some of the, you know, some of the hearings, but not all of them. Um but, you know, we we haven't seen anything that is like, oh my god, we wanna, you know. We want, you know, bungee jumping in the backyard or something, I mean, you know, there's some some major thing that has changed. And I think that would be helpful for the board to know.
Yeah. Okay, what do you think, Danny?
I I think those are all good ideas, um, I think, um, so. At 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 a one point, I did receive an email from Charlie Bosworth, I guess there was an early meeting. And our tree work had come up in their discussion, I did not see it. Um, but I thought, what what Charlie Bosworth said in the email was that um. He said, I guess the chair of that um. Board suggested that he'd be in touch with me about the updates, so I thought I could. Provide the zoning bylaw section four A with the updates highlighted in yellow. Um, and provide the um. You know, the the rules and regulations from section five are actually quite helpful on this, on the on on the tree. Cause cause we say it in our points, but this sort of reaffirms. Um, you know, uh and refers to the avoiding tree damage during construction guidelines. By the International Society of A- Aboriculture. Um.
Yeah, I don't think they've got a lot on, I mean, there's a lot of, you know, existing buildings and and tarmac. On the site now, it's not like the Carberry Estate or other.
Oh, I know, but there are some trees that we would, I mean, especially toward the back and the side. There are some trees that they don't need to kill during construction, I know they're taking a lot out, just and I know it's pretty open. But what few trees they have, here's some guidance on how to keep them, and here's how the. You know, here's how the planning board approaches it, um. I think it would be easiest to give them the bylaw. In highlights as opposed to conditions, because you've already stated in your condition, this just further. Um demonstrates how.
So are you suggesting, Danny, that that would be language that then they could incorporate into their own decision?
Yes.
Okay.
They could just refer to the bylaw and just say, rather than, they wouldn't repeat it, they would just say in their decision. That, you know, we expect compliance with whatever section of the bylaw, period.
Right, right, so so provide that bylaw with the section so they could see it in context, and then they could choose to refer to it. Uh you know, however they wanted to.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and um. Now, the rules and regulations are the planning boards, but um. But the the rules and regulations that we updated that are in full effect now, um. Section five, statement of development effect. Um, you know, describe how the project will affect. Features and measures to be taken to prevent unnecessary damage, specify trees to be preserved. And replacement of trees not to be preserved, um.
Well, you know, you, Danny, looking at it on Google Earth, that goes very well to the argument of the fact that we don't wanna. Um have the building flipped, flipped the way the peer reviewer has suggested it, because looking on. On Google Earth right now, there's massive tree right where that, um where the peer reviewer is saying. He wants to see the commercial end.
You're absolutely right, and that's the view from the street, we could look at a beautiful big old tree as opposed to. A very tall, massive um long building across the back of the property, so, yeah, I think. I think.
Argues for, you know, once again, for not going along with what that suggestion had been.
Right, right. And and so like, um, rules and regulations, um, five point four two three nine. Measures to be taken to ensure survival of existing or newly established trees. Including compliance insofar as reasonably possible, with the guidelines entitled New Tree Planting. Issued by the International Society of Arboriculture, so just, it 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 just backs up and reaffirms, I think. I think if it's possible to attach these two documents with those parts I could highlight. So that they can refer to those in context, the ZBA can choose. How to incorporate that.
Yeah, that's fun with with me.
Yes.
Okay.
So, for the sake of this letter, I mean, we have a little bit of adjusting to do, who wrote this, was this Kathleen or was this Cheryl? Kathleen.
Yeah, so I'll do the next one.
Okay, do you mind just making the adjustments that we talked about, and then. I mean, Danny can just send you maybe a highlighted copy of what she wants to attach. I think this is a pretty minor adjustment to this letter as it stands now.
Right.
So I'm, I mean, it sounds like we're all in agreement with where we wanna go with this, so this might be an easy one, oh, I'm sorry, Danny, did you want something else?
Um, I'm sorry, I just wanted to add one more, because, yeah, um, our rules and regulations, section seven, we added language. So that the board could require a bond or other suitable guarantee to ensure post-construction care of trees. And if trees fail to survive in three years, um the board can require, um, you know, um. Good compliance and and then it, so I I'm gonna attach three documents, okay?
Okay.
Thank you for your patience, and and this is not on a scenic way, right?
No. No.
But it is, um, it's some, it's, um, I think it's a scenic, well, and the Mass Historical Commission, there is something in it about, we sent, we were sent information about that long ago, I think.
Yeah.
It's a scenic, it's a parkway designated.
Parkway, that's right, right. Which does have some historic significance.
Yeah. And does it have stone walls? I didn't notice any when I was.
No, I don't think so. No, I don't think so. Yeah, I didn't see any.
Okay, all right.
So that's actually one other note. I mean, as a parkway, there's not supposed to be any heavy truck traffic or truck traffic at all, really? I assume for construction purposes, there would have to be some exception to that, but I wonder if.
Well, they're going to have to file a construction management plan in any event.
Okay. Who does that get filed with? The ZBA?
Um, yeah. And then, you know, goes to the building inspector.
I don't, I don't think it hurts though to put that in our letter.
No, I don't think so either, right.
Maybe we can make mention that that's something specific to, to pay attention to, because that is something that the neighbors have brought up quite a bit and over the years in discussion of the variety of potential uses at the site. And I know there's, there's a ban on trucks right now on the parkway, and they would certainly like to keep it that way.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good condition, actually, to, to mention that and in the construction management plan, thoughtful consideration would be given to minimizing the truck traffic, construction traffic as much as possible or steering it to a time of day.
Certainly that doesn't conflict with the elementary school peak hours of arrival and departure, I think would be good.
Yeah, I think that's a really good idea if other people agree with that.
Well, I think it's going to be interesting too, because, you know, they're going to have to come from that direction because to make the right-hand turn onto the property. So I really think figuring out an acceptable route, you know, like we talked about with the Willcut Wood special permit, like which streets wouldn't be good or wouldn't be allowed to be used, I think would be helpful here as well.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm imagining that that would, the preferred route would be down 138 and then turn to be on the correct side of the parkway to take that right-hand turn into the development, but then you can only take a right-hand turn. So then you would have to go up Canton Ave, I would imagine, back to 138, which could present challenges. Although I guess there's trucks now on, on Canton Ave for Carberry.
Not that.
It's not a truck route either.
Do you want to suggest signage? We could also suggest signage. We did that for Carberry Walcott. I think it's really made a difference.
Well, even on the Old Town Farm, the Milton Woods, the Governor Stoughton Road had signage that it wasn't used to be used for trucks. You know, so there's some narrow.
I don't know that we can put signage. It's not our, it's a, I think, isn't that, it's isn't a state road? It's an MDC road?
I'm talking about the crossroads, so like the, they would be Milton Roads that run between 138 and the parkway. So the, some of them are very narrow and the topography shifts on them, you know, the alignments. I, I think it's something that the applicant should look at and think about and come up with a plan for as part of the process, just like we would, just like we did for Milton Woods and Willcut Woods.
Yeah.
In those special permits.
Maybe the way that we can write that into this letter is just to ask for careful attention of the truck routes during construction and to minimize impacts on.
You know, possible signage.
It's going to be more than just construction, because they are going to have like a, they're going to have like trucks delivering, you know, stuff to the, is it a cafe?
That's right.
Or something like that.
Yeah, but you can limit those, those, you know, I've seen it in Boston where they limit the size vehicle you're allowed to bring in.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, they would have to potentially download from a bigger truck the smaller vehicle at some point before they.
Well, that's probably a later permit anyway, wouldn't it be? You know.
I mean, for a small, brief, small commercial space, Kathleen, you're talking about somebody might be able to come in their car and SUV or van or something. But, you know, you're going to have, probably the biggest thing ongoing will be a trash pickup. You know, but I do think the construction management plan is really important in that, in that location. Actually, you know, all of the 40Bs, I think it's actually important. So I think we should add that to all of them.
Got it.
Yeah, you know, the, the other thing I'm thinking of is that the fencing has actually really worked on the Carberry Walcott property, protecting the, well, the trees, but also the areas that they're, you know, that they don't need to destroy during construction. If they could protect those areas so that the subcontractors don't put their materials down.
Yeah, I mean, Denny, they're going to, I mean, it's different from Carberry, because they're going to have to take down two buildings, three buildings.
Yeah, but they, I think a tree protection plan for the ones, especially at the rear, and if there's any that they can save at the front, because that was really important.
Yeah.
Part of the discussion for this one. And, you know, frankly, the other, some of the other 40Bs, they're not intending to save any trees, which is a shame and problematic. But on this one, they are.
Yeah.
I think, you know, preserving those and doing, taking the steps to keep them from having damage and then eventually dying, like Denny.
Yeah, well, Denny sends me the language, you know, I'll put that in the, I'll put that in the draft.
Yeah, because we had, we had really good language in the special permit. In all of the attachments, the tree preservation plan and the construction management plan are all part of one file, I think, by the special permit for Willcut Woods. And I think we learned it along the way, and that one's the most recent that probably captures the most, right, Denny?
I think you're right, Cheryl. I think we, that had all of our lessons in one. From four years of trouble.
I think that would be really good. The only other thing is, I think in the Willcut Woods project, we had them fence off just by phase, their construction zone. But my understanding is this is a one-phase project, so I don't know that we'd want to go that far on the ice house. But the tree protection plan and the fencing around the trees, I think, is excellent. So that would be great.
And is there some vegetation in the back that doesn't need to be killed? Because in the back, you're budding that pond, right? So that's going to be, you know.
That's going to be controlled by the Conservation Commission, because you're going to be within the buffer line of a, of the pond.
Right. So I know they're not going to go on the buffer line, but you see what I mean? If it's not, if, if, if it's not necessary to park, you know, equipment and run bobcats and everything else and piles of debris on the back vegetation, if you keep that vegetation alive, it will clean any water that, that comes off of the, you know, construction area, it'll clean it instead of it going directly into the pond.
Yeah, but we have to do that with hay bales and all that sort of stuff with the Concom? As per conditions?
I, I, I would think the Concom would have some things like that too. I'm, I'm just thinking Cheryl can relate to this. I'm thinking of 333 Brush Hill Road. They had bales of hay, but when they took out, when they stripped all the vegetation and just let weeds, remember those awful weeds? That weren't, that weren't at all helpful. And so, and, and, you know, sometimes you think something's going to take, you know, nine months, and then it's five years later, and it's just going right downhill or, I just don't want to go right toward that water.
I mean, I'm looking at the site plan again now, and if you're interested, I can quickly do a share again. So this is the, right now, this is a gravel area. You can see it here. And then this says it's the minimum building setback. I don't, it doesn't really show what the wetland is here. If we go to the survey, which is here, you know, this has a existing building that would be torn down with the wood deck here, and then this gravel area. So what I would say is, you know, there is a, and I, let's see if they're going to, I don't think they're showing anything in, back in that area. So like, to Denny's point, I think it's outs, it could, or could not be, because we don't really know here, you know, what jurisdiction it falls in. So I, I think we could say, if it doesn't, if it falls outside of that jurisdiction, we would like to see, you know, the protection, right? Because it's, I did read in the Tetra Tech's peer review that they noted that they, they don't show the delineation and they've asked them to show it. So it's hard for us to know where it is, right? It doesn't show on here.
About this, that we want to make sure there's care and attention to the preservation of the pond and the vegetation bordering the property line?
Yep.
Yeah, outside of the, of the necessary limits of work, right? Because I would say that some of that falls outside of the necessary limits of work back here, right?
Uh huh. Yep.
Like here, they're going to do a rain garden. So obviously, they've got, and that's already where, where the gravel is. So that's not going to remove any trees for that. So, you know, it's this area, which is 30 feet. And then if that's 30, this might be another 10. It could be, could very well be like a whole 40-foot swath back here that you wouldn't want them. Now, by the time they take this down and they've got gravel here, there's probably not too much in here. But if you said that back 40 feet, that they needed to protect it and have it be part of the no, no work area, no storage, no parking, no anything. It, again, without kind of going to what the aerial map is to see where the trees are, it's a little hard to know, but.
Okay.
All right. Anything else on this one? I think we have a good start. So should we take a vote, given the next, I think Thursday is April 1st, and they're going to want this. I would assume we would want to get it to the ZBA sooner rather than later, since they've now closed their public hearing. Should we just take a vote of our board to authorize Tim to submit a letter for our discussion this evening, and we can circulate a draft once it's written?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody want to make that motion?
I would make the motion to, as stated, I'm just trying to see where Pine Tree Brook, Brook ends up, to, to authorize the, the, to authorize me or whatever to draft a letter reflecting the comments of the planning board on the Ice House 40B project and to submit such letter through Tim to the zoning board in advance of the deliberations of the ZBA on this particular application.
Second? Okay, roll call vote. Denny Swenson?
Yes.
Cheryl Tiegais?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
I understand, yes. Okay.
And April, just one last thing. I don't know if we need to vote on it or if we already did this vote, but remember how we spoke about any one of us being able to speak at ZBA hearings on the, on behalf of the planning board? So I just wanted to make sure that we're still good with that.
Yes. So, I mean, do we want to just make a blanket vote? Did we do that already? I don't recall. I know we all. Um, I think we all agreed that that makes sense. I don't know if we nominated a person. I don't think we did. I think we just kind of left it open-ended. How does the board want to handle it?
I mean, I thought we all agreed in principle that, I appreciate, if anybody's willing to sit through that meeting and they want to speak up, please do. I, I showed up and I chatted away last time, and I, I don't know, so I'm.
I feel like we've discussed the projects well enough that we all pretty, we're all on the same page. I don't think there's even any disagreement on, frankly, any points related to these projects. So I, I don't know that we need a vote. I think we all sort of agreed in theory that this is fine.
Okay, good.
Okay. Okay, so I'm just pulling up my email from Tim on the next project. So the next hearing of relevance is 648 Canton Avenue.
So April, I am now going to, going forward, recuse myself on discussions related to 648 Canton Ave and 652 Canton Ave.
Okay.
So I will stop the video and stop the, or leave the meeting, so I, for that discussion. So we have other agenda items?
No, I was, well, we, the only other hearing that we have is 582 Blue Hill Ave, but we won't even have the peer review presentations till April 14th. So that will be an April 15th agenda item, and that is the end of our business. So if you want to stop, I think that's probably fine. But before you do, I just want to say, I forgot, I wanted to say during the staff dates and I forgot, if anybody has not yet been by the Hendry's Building, please take a peek. It looks beautiful. It's moving along quickly. And I, I live on Elliot. I drive by it every day. But if you haven't seen it in a while, swing by. It looks terrific.
Okay, so thank you. You still have time.
Thanks for joining us. Have a good night.
Thank you. I, I was just waiting to see if I, I got my first COVID vaccine shot today, and I was just waiting to see if I was going to have a symptom during the meeting, but good news is no.
Good, I'm budging, you're feeling well.
Yeah. I'm so excited. Cheryl's going to lift everyone.
All right, thanks, guys. Bye.
Thank you. So actually, now we don't have our letter. Does anybody else have the letter that we sent most recently to the ZBA on?
Um, I don't know, take a look. But the, you know, there's still, that's still moving around. I, I don't think they're really ready for us yet. The, the, the hearing, I, I sat in, so did Denny, obviously. And of course, my mother calls in the middle, and I thought I was automatically muted when I stopped speaking, and it turns out you're not. So, you know, when your 91-year-old mother on, on the phone, I'm like, I just checking to make sure she's still alive, you know, that's really. So anyway, yeah, that was embarrassing.
Talking about her credit card, and we're like, ah, Kathleen.
I mean, we've all, if you haven't had a Zoom debacle like that yet, you're just nobody, you know? I mean, people have, people have been in meetings listening to me yelling at my kids. I mean, that's just the way of the world.
It was like, I can't, she can't, she got something in the mail and, you know, somebody else's name on the credit card. And I'm like, oh, my God, just shred it, will you? Yeah, oh my, yeah, it was unbelievable.
That's hilarious.
Um, but, but they, you know, the, the issues on this project are really, and stormwater is amazing. And the discussion about the, the peer reviewer, whatever, from Horsley and Witten, Sam Reardon was amazing. I mean, he was just like, where are they, you know, where are they putting all this water? How are they going to have this work? And so it was really, it was, you know, it was really pretty incredible, actually, by the end, I thought. What did you think?
I, I thought it was pretty incredible too. I mean, there's no room for the snow, you know, just to plow it. There's no room for the construction to take place without getting into the abutters property. They were concerned during construction how the fire trucks would access, because there's just no room. The, the structure is just so massive that it just, just getting through construction seems very, very difficult. And then like, there's no room for any of the trees on the property, because you'd need to take them all down in certain areas in order to have any movement, which still wouldn't be enough movement. So my takeaway from that meeting was, this is just too massive. But of course, Kathleen and I couldn't say it in those words. We could only try to come up with conditions and points, so.
Yeah, I mean, it was really so, you know, the, the problem they have is that the groundwater is so high that, you know, so the detention basins are already going to be full of water. And so that when it starts to rain, you know, where, or they already got water in there. And then of course, they have the stormwater system in, under the building. And, and it's like, well, wait a minute, how are you going to deal with groundwater coming in to your stormwaters infiltration system? And, and, and the answer was, well, they don't have one. They don't have an answer. And, and, and the answer was, well, they don't have one. They don't have an answer.
And they're not, and they're not supposed to mix. They're not.
And then the other issue was, they were thinking, well, you know, you're gonna have to have a secondary emergency access up Holmes Lane for a fire truck, and we're all like, the house sits right on, I mean, those antique homes are right on the road. There's no way for the fire truck to make a turn. So that was kinda interesting.
And then.
You know, I, I think in, in general, I think they, there, there's still a lot of work that needs to be done on that. I mean, I think that Denny made the excellent point about the fact that, you know, if you're taking down all those trees that suck up all the ground, groundwater, they're gonna have even more problem. Because there's a stream that's through there and there's some question, for some reason, it got designated as intermittent, but I don't know how that qualified as intermittent. But, you know, it's really pretty, pretty serious situation about trying to deal with the groundwater and the stormwater. And they're not complying with, you know, three out of the four, you know, sections of the stormwater by law, so.
And then they would often use a pump, they were talking about using a pump to remove the water, but you can't just remove water from the site because then it would draw the water from the wetlands onto the site, out of the wetlands. So it's a very complicated situation that I don't know quite how they're gonna address that.
So what is the process for that? So those sound like pretty significant comments from our peer reviewer. And now, does the applicant have to respond to those, or could they just choose not to do anything?
Not to, yeah, I mean, they could choose not to respond to it. I mean, I, I think, I mean, on the other one, on, on Canton, on Blue Hill Ave, apparently, somebody was saying, well, last night, they just said, well, here's our presentation on our revised design and we're done. So, you know, sort of dumping it back on, on, on Jeff Mullin and his, you know, compatriots, trying to figure out, well, you know, what are we gonna do? We're gonna issue a permit, but with these conditions or whatever. They're not quite at the same, you know, rate at this one. But, you know, the traffic people have said there's not enough parking. Because it's, there's no, there's no public transportation, so everybody there is gonna be driving somewhere. That requires improvements to the Reedsville Canton Ave intersection, cuz that's already an F. And it's gonna be, I don't know, there are any lower numbers, hey, worse letters than that. But, you know, that intersection's already a mess. So we would have to have a condition in there that they're gonna contribute, you know, X amount of money to a traffic study and improvements for that intersection. I mean, that's an easy ten grand right there. So, and, and as I said, I think the real issue is, is, I mean, the water is just a serious problem. And I don't know what they're, you know, what they're gonna be planning. Last time around with, you know, Blue Hill, they came back in with a completely different design.
Yeah, so what is your recommendation, Kathleen, that we sit tight on this one?
I think we have to sit for a bit. I think we have to wait to see, you know, what happens. I'm, so you said this one, that hearing for this, the next one, that they expect us to have some comments to them for, on, on April twenty-first?
No, well.
The other one.
April sixth is the night that the ZBA has set aside for town department testimony? Six forty-eight Canton Ave. So, I, I mean, I don't think that prohibits the planning board from speaking at a later meeting. And maybe because of the technicality of the questions and concerns here from the peer reviewer. They should let the town engineer go first and kind of reiterate their concerns.
Yeah, I mean, I think the town engineer, I mean, cuz the question also came up about the fact that the infrastructure in Canton Ave for sewer and water is probably a hundred years old.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah.
So, you know, how's that, how's that gonna work?
Well, there could be capacity issues, too, yeah. So maybe then we just sit tight. I mean, I, I'm, I'm a little anxious about submitting a comment letter about conditions on a project that we don't think even worth.
Yeah, I, I think, I think we would at least maybe send, you know, we could send a memo to Tim to say, okay, you know, you know, here's our, here's our letter that we sent in January. We've been, you know, Denny was watched, Cheryl's sat on it. But, you know, the, what happened is the town council for the applicant made an objection to her presence. Because she's not an abutter, but she's a neighbor. So, so she's gonna stay in that role and then not come on as part of the planning board. So, I think we could send a memo to Tim that while he's organizing town comments, you know, we could, you know, repeat Denny's, you know, comments about the, you know, the impact of cutting down all those trees. Two of the, of the stormwater that we're concerned about, the fact that, you know, they got a stormwater system sitting under a building. And, you know, how's that gonna be working?
And the adequacy of the existing infrastructure to manage.
Yeah, and, and, and traffic improvements that are gonna be necessary. And, and that one, just like Denny was saying about, you know, you've said before in the Walcott Woods and Carberry about, you know, the construction management. Construction management plan for that site is totally complicated. You can't park on Canton Ave.
You can't park on Holmes Lane, and you can't park in the woods or on the stream. And, and they're talking about clearing eighty percent of the lot. But even still, they're just, they don't have enough room to move the, you know, to, to regrade the land. Where do you put the dirt while you wait for it to get picked up, you know? There's just not enough room on the site to do the construction, is my takeaway. And I thought the, the, the stormwater expert did a wonderful, clear explanation of that. And, and, and it may be even more concerned than ever because it, it, it's funny, it all comes down to the space and the water.
Yeah, well, those seem like critical path issues for them to resolve.
Yeah, so, so as I said, I, so I don't think we would be in the same position as we are for Ice House, which has closed the public hearing. As, as this one is still open and, and there's still more, you know, more information to come forward, so.
So your recommendation is to send sort of an informal correspondence through Tim?
Like, we talked about it tonight and, you know, we watched the hearings, and so, so far, these are our thoughts that, you know.
And just reserving our right to share, comment as the project.
And Tim can include that, you know, whatever he's gonna be providing as testimony.
Okay, are you comfortable writing that memo? Okay. So do we need to take a vote on it?
You know, I, I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't think so.
No, I don't think so. I appreciate you doing that, Kathleen.
I do, too, thank you. And I actually think it helps for all of our, just consistency across all these documents, so thank you very much.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you for all the time that you've spent on them. It's been very, very helpful. And it, and, and I like the consistency and the clarity.
And so then, just to reiterate one more time, the Blue Hill Ave project, we are going to wait to discuss because we don't have the results of the peer review as of yet. So we want our peer reviewers to review all of the details on this project as they have on the other two that we discussed tonight. From what we understand, they're making that presentation to the zoning board of appeals on April fourteenth. And we now have a meeting scheduled on April fifteenth where we will put this on the agenda to discuss our letter to the Board of Appeals on that project. And I think that concludes our agenda. We have a discussion of housing production strategies, but we didn't have anything, unless any members of the board have something to add. We don't have anything on our agenda to discuss tonight.
I mean, I think we're, at some point in the game, we're gonna have to talk about the impact of the housing choice legislation and sort of say, where are we gonna adopt, you know, the necessary multifamily by right zoning?
Has DHCD released any guidance on that yet?
I haven't seen anything.
I haven't either, okay. So I'm making note of that, and we can, maybe Allison can remind Tim that that's something that we wanna do when the opportunity presents itself. And I think maybe.
Yeah, I'd really like to be pushing Judy Barrett to get this report.
So I have been pushing her. And I know Tim has, but I followed up again this week. So she promises we'll have something tomorrow before the end of business. She's traveling with some family issue, which may or may not be the reason for the delay, but hopefully we'll have something to review tomorrow so that we can have a thoughtful conversation about it at our next meeting.
Yeah, because I mean, that would be someplace that, you know, you'd be looking at doing multi-family, you know, multi, you know, mixed-use zoning in certain areas, so.
Yeah, but I think it has to be within a certain proximity of a T.
Yeah, it won't address the, it won't address the situation we have with the MBTA communities, but it would at least, you know, for example, you know, there are certain sites, you know, suggested in East Milton that would be suitable for mixed-use. And we could go ahead and start working on that, so. I think maybe the, the one, one thing we might wanna think about for the housing choice, and this is Allison and, and Tim to talk about, is taking a look at Two Adams Street. You know, where you already had that special permit, but it's, God, it's old and, you know, kinda wacky. So maybe there's a way to sort of think about that site as something that we could consider for compliance with that housing choice.
Yes, and from what I understand, there is a project brewing there that is expected to be coming before the board in the near future. So that's definitely something we should talk about.
So that one, you know, so that would maybe some, we could, you know, work on that as an idea to say, okay, fine, how can we craft the zoning for that that would address whatever DHCD comes up with for requirements?
Yep. Which might dovetail nicely with the potential project, too.
Yeah, but there's been something burbling there for a while.
Yeah, that's true. There was something permitted there for a while.
I know, I know.
But I think that this is, it sounds to me as though this is a, a real project. And I believe the applicant has reached out to Tim and discussed it. I mean, I heard this through Tim and I think, I think that it was more than just sort of a rumor. I think there's been an actual conversation. Allison, I don't know if you know anything more on this?
And I don't know anything about Two Adams, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. All right, well, if that's it, then I guess you entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A second.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote. Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Denny Swenson?
Yes.
April Anderson? Very much, and have a good night.
Good night, Denny.
You, too.
Thank you. Okay, bye-bye.